Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, November 25th, 2019. It's 5:00 PM. And this is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. And let's stand and do the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Randy, please.
Trustee LaRue?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Marx?
Present.
Treasurer Johnson?
Here.
Clerk Gertari is here, and Supervisor Durant?
Thank you. I've been asked to swap out two and one. Oh, okay. I figured, because they were looking at the agenda. Public comment? Does anybody want to share anything?
No, right now.
Okay, that's fine, thanks. And no board member comment. Approval of the agenda, but I've had a recommendation, we swap two and one. Discuss the candidates before the manager's contract. Does it matter to anybody?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So then we will consider selection of the township manager first. So for anyone that might be just joining us, our township manager contract is up December 31st of this year. The board, he offered and the board accepted, an up to six-month extension to June 1st of 2020 to help us through the transition of his retirement. We had posted ads in various places on the Internet and with various township organizations and city organizations, and we received 16 applications. Seven did not meet any of the qualifications. Six did not meet most of the qualifications, and that left us with four applicants. We interviewed those, we interviewed three last week, and the final candidate withdrew. So we have three individuals to consider for the manager's position. I have some thoughts on how this can go, but I'd rather check with the board and see what their preference is. You want to take each candidate individually? Do you want to look at your matrix scores? Do you want to just have an open discussion? I'd rather leave it a little loose and not have to worry so much about pushing buttons and raising hands, as long as we don't try to talk over everybody, so it can be a little more productive. Pete?
I would like to take a look at, are we sending more out and see if we get some more applicants, rather than close it with three?
Okay. John?
Sorry, I couldn't hear Pete.
Send out the request again for more applicants and see what else is out there. Can we expand a little bit?
Okay, John, go ahead.
I thought, pardon me, but I thought the supervisor was asking for a way to deal with the three that we had extensive sessions with. And I would like to suggest that if you want to go through that and want to hear from the board, perhaps you could take them, each one individually, and just ask for a consensus of the board as to they want to give them further consideration. That way, you reduce the field accordingly. That's one way to do it. There are other ways, I'll leave it to the supervisor, but one way you can do it is simply indicate who we're talking about and have a consensus of the board, simply do they want to consider that applicant further.
Okay. Dan?
I'm going to just take, I guess, one step further than that, and I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion with the information that was presented to us today, that we have, or that, that we move to put the process on hold until candidate number four has had the proper time to recover from his surgery, not to exceed four months. I believe we owe it to him.
Do we have a second for that motion? Okay, motion dies. Anybody else want to comment? Ernie?
I looked through all three of these. I spent time looking at each one of them and that, and going through that, and then going through the qualifications that we're looking for, for township manager and that. We did a good search, we come up with this. Sure, we can go out and spend another two months, three months, to try and find someone else and that. I think we have three candidates we have to address. One candidate is, to me, has a lot of information, but does not have the background at all. And I think that one candidate will no longer, to my estimation, is no longer consideration. We have two, what I consider would do the job here in the township and that. I cannot see us going back out again, and again, and again, because it's going to be continual and that. And pretty soon, not going to get anyone going to apply, because they say that if they don't like it, they'll go out again and that, too. I think we got two candidates that have the right backgrounds, that we can make a decision on today, to move forward on and that. And both of them bring different items to the table. One of them has more experience in the managerial type than the other one does, but that's something that we have to talk about and go through overall. But I cannot see us going out advertising again and again. I've been through this too many times. If you've got good candidates, you sit down, you go through them, you look at them, and either it's a yes or a no and that. Just to go out and get more candidates, I don't agree with that at all. It's just a time-wasting thing, so. I'd much rather stake all three of them and say yes or no on one of them, as John said, and say, see who we end up with. I personally feel that we have a good candidate here, from my own perspective and leading it, that could do the job for the township now and into the future and that.
Okay. Dave?
I agree with Treasurer Johnson. I think we've got a couple candidates here, and I agree with them, too, on the third one. I think we're probably thinking of the same person, that just doesn't have the background to step into this position at the township. But the other two do, and I think one of those two, and it's Jennifer...
James Meslow?
James Meslow, is head and shoulders above number two. She's got some 27 years there, and she does everything that, that we're looking for. She has, she has grant writing experience, she's got manager experience, she has experience with municipal budgets, she has experience with, well, if you go through the job description of, there's A through O that are minimum qualifications and recommendations, and she meets every one of them. The only one she comes up short in is the three years' experience where she's only got two as a manager, but at the rest of them, she exceeds the qualifications. I think she's head and shoulders above the rest, and I think she's probably the best candidate we got set in front of us. And I don't know, if we go out and start looking for anybody else, I don't know who you're looking for that's going to beat those qualifications. I just can't imagine who you're going to find out there.
Yeah, I agree. I think we have two candidates above the rest, above the third one, and I don't disagree with any of the statements that were made. I don't think we should go out any further to look, because, again, I agree with the treasurer that you're just going to continue to go out, and it's not going to be a good situation. As I look at municipalities around us that have done the same thing, and it hasn't really been too productive for them, so I don't think it'd be productive for us, so. I agree with trustee Wiegand, I think we have candidates that we can move forward with.
Do we reconsider the ones that we threw out because they didn't meet qualifications? If we do it for this one, do we go back and take a look at it? Is there anyone else in there that we threw out because of not being qualified?
No.
That's my question.
They don't have the, the initial seven we did, was one-page name and phone number, and working at Walmart. Have no idea if they have any college experience or anything. There's no information. Those are the first seven. Well, I'm answering a question.
He didn't have his button?
That's all right.
She asked him to push buttons.
The other ones did not meet, on the top of your matrix, there were those minimums, they did not meet those.
I just asked a question, that's all.
Okay. Dan?
I don't think anybody's asking at this point to go out and cast a web to look for other candidates. I think we have good candidates, but I think we have another one that's a good candidate. And unfortunately, with something that happened, we're not in a hurry to do this. We've got time, we've got six months. So I think, just table this whole thing, bring it back up in a couple of months when the person, if at that point is willing to, to meet with us, then we have that other candidate also to look at. And I don't think this is something that has to be done today.
When you hire, hang on a second, I get my turn. When you hire, when you interview people, you have certain obligations to them. And even at my level, I take a lot of care in doing that, and I make sure that I send out letters, which I did for these people, thanking them for coming, and told them about today's meeting. And I think you have to pay them the homage of acknowledging what they did. In this case, these people went out of their way to study about us, and do some research, and spent an hour-plus with us, some of them traveled, and we can't just say, oh, we're not considering you. We owe them enough respect to deliberate, this is what we're supposed to do. The public was aware of the interviews, they know what we talked about, because it was, you know, on YouTube, but I think we at least need to have a little bit of a conversation. I also agree with the three around me completely. I think we have two good candidates, one I believe is not as qualified, and we need to seriously consider those two, and say which one might be better or not. Just dismiss them, I think is negligent. Ernie, I think you were first. Was he? Go ahead, Dave.
And I agree with what you're saying there, we need to make a decision on, on the two front runners that are, that are in front of us, regardless of what we decide to do after that. We need to, we owe them a decision, and we don't need to extend it out four months. And in order to move this forward, I'd move to extend a contract offer for the position of manager to Jennifer James Meslow.
Support.
Okay. Ernie, so your light was on. I don't know if you were going to comment on that. Do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I just think that, in going through her resume, and I just, what I've already said, I think she's just head and shoulders above our number-two candidate, just from a background and a experience concept. I went back and looked at my, what I filled out the day she was interviewing. And keep in mind that she was the first one that presented herself, and it's fours and fives straight down the line. When she was asked the question about the difference between charter township and general law, she was right on the money, quoting state statute for us. I mean, and she hadn't worked in a charter township before, but she did her homework. And if I could say anything about her, that even where she didn't have any hands-on experience, she did her homework, which says that she's, she's serious about this job and she's up to speed. Everything down, just everything down the line, it's, when she talked about policy governance, she defined exactly what it is, and she hasn't had any experience with it. But I think she was in our website, going through everything that she could get her hands on. Anyway, I think she's got a good understanding of policy governance, her work with budgets and grant writing, and the fact that she has been in supervision of public work departments, public safety, fire and, and police. She's got a wealth of experience there. She's a master's degree in, in public communications. And I think she may not be the status quo of what this board is used to working with, and this doesn't, by no means, have anything against Randy, but she is different than Randy. Her approach to it is different than Randy, and I think that's a good thing. I think the township is headed in the right direction, but if we get somebody in here with a little different outlook on it, and a little different approach as to how to do things, I think that could move us just that much farther than we already are. I think she's a good candidate, I would, I support her 100 percent.
Wait a second, yeah?
Yes, we did. Treasurer Johnson?
Oh, yeah, Ernie did, that's right.
What was the deciding factor? Was it when she said that she wants more detail in the budget?
No, you can go from, from one right, right through eight, and I don't see where she answered any of the questions. Every question she spoke to, she talked on it for 10 minutes. It wasn't just rambling, it was an intelligent conversation, and she knew what she was talking about. And you notice at the end, there wasn't a lot of people on this board that was asking her follow-up questions, because she covered it all the first time around. She's just extremely intelligent, she's well-versed in, in government municipal matters, she has connections in state government, which I think would be a plus for this township. I just don't see a downside to it.
Ernie, you made the motion, did you want to comment first? Or the second?
Dave pretty well covered most of it and that, so. But overall, going back through her application and looking at everything and that, and she's involved with so many things that we're doing here, and she did so many things and that. I don't think it'll be a negative on our part at all and that, though. And I commented at the end, remember, commented to her that she did her research, she went back into all the documentations and read everything, so she knew what she was talking about. I was very surprised when she started talking about the audit and some of the other things and that, that she was concerned with and that, too, going that way, too, so. I think she'll be a very good fit, like anything. I've done it so many years, that you, you talk to people, you look at everything, you go through it, and until they get here and you start seeing it, you don't really know a lot of times, but you're assuming certain things are happening and that, and on paper and, and communication, I think it is going to be a good fit. She'll be different than Randy, but sometimes that's good, real good. Different outlook, different views, what's going on, and they move forward and that, and that, so. I have no more. I think it'd be a good fit for the township, and she's willing, she knows it's going to be 24/7, she knows it's a long term, and that's what she's going for and that. I have no more.
John?
Roll call vote.
Well, we don't know if we had any, didn't give anybody a chance to say anything else, Did you have any comments?
Roll call vote.
Okay. Pete, did you have any follow-up?
No, I just, the remarks on her, you know, she handled herself very well, but there's something bothering me, and I can't put my finger on it.
I think she's a professional speaker. She's articulate, she knows what to say, when to say it. She did her homework, I agree, but she's a very intelligent person. I just, my opinion is, I would like just to have all the candidates that we originally talked about have a chance to speak, and that's just unfortunate, that's not, not going to be the case. I don't see why we can't put this off for a little while, just to have, just to say that we got to do it, whatever. You say we owe it to, to the two candidates, I think we owe it to the third one also. You know, it's unfortunate what happened.
Fourth one?
I'm sorry?
Fourth, third or the fourth?
The fourth. It's unfortunate what happened, but we, we'll never know, I guess.
Well, I can't.
I wish she had a little more experience in, in the townships and them. You know, she's got all the educational things, but...
Now, what's her work history? She doesn't meet the minimum qualifications, so...
You have to make sure...
Why are we bending over backwards? Because she can, she can sit, sit up here and, and speak and...
She meets every qualification and then beyond.
She doesn't have the years. Three. So that's not the minimum. We set the minimum, if she doesn't meet it.
Go ahead, Ernie.
One thing I've learned over years, through a lot of interviewing, that, looking at candidates, when you get a bunch of candidates in, and you decide, well, maybe we can go out and look for more, and you have maybe one or two, three candidates that are fairly good, they're gone. They're not going to wait around, so you're starting from scratch. They're not going to be there the next time around. If you're talking about three or four months on the road, what you have, they're not going to be here.
Then it wasn't meant to be.
I'm sorry, I don't agree with that, because you look at what you have today, and you move forward today and that. We gave no guarantee on anybody to start with. They all had to present their credentials, and we weren't with the credentials and that. Granted, I've had this happen, too. I've had people, I've hired, supposed to start on that day, they never showed up, and you start all over again. It's not an easy process and that, going through and advertising and finding people to do things and that, so. Sure, we could probably find someone, who knows? I don't know. We don't have any idea what the future's going to bring. You have to go with what you know today and that. That's where you're at, at this point in time.
Well, we have a couple things we can do, or to consider.
We're not voting yet.
John?
Just a minute, John.
Just wait. This is pretty important. We can do a roll call vote when we call the question.
Roll call vote ends discussion.
No, calling the question ends it. I don't want to debate this. This is serious, we have to have this discussion. First thing is, the candidate's going to get something like 90 days, whatever we decide, 90 days probation. They are also going to go through a background check and a financial check, done by the sheriff's If it shows something, we think about it again. Just because we offer a job doesn't mean that person starts tomorrow. There's a process to go through. There's a physical that has to be done. There's a lot of research that has to be done. This may not be the right candidate, we don't know that, but my whole point is, you don't take three people who've put this much into it and just drop them at the drop of a hat. You have to consider them.
Nobody is saying to drop them, because all I'm saying is just, let's put it off for just a little bit. Even if we put it off for a month and see where we are, I don't think that's asking too much.
Well, what we could do, if the board pleases, is to call candidate four and ask them if they're interested to continue the process.
That would be fine.
We have a motion on the floor, so we can't change that.
I understand, but I'm just saying, that would be fine, in my opinion. We owe candidate four that much, in my opinion.
Okay, well, that's your opinion, but if the rest of everybody agrees, then it has validity. Dave?
Well, I just, I mean, all due respect to candidate number four, I don't, I don't think we owe him that much. He was a candidate, he was being considered, and stuff happens, and this falls under the "stuff happens" criteria. I don't think we should be waiting two or three or four months. That's pushing us down the road, and for all that, all we know at that point, you may have one candidate that is not on our list right now, and you may have no candidates, because number four may not be interested anymore. No, I think it's wrong, I think we, we've, we put 17 candidates up here, we whittled it down to four, one didn't show, and, and out of the three that remain, we've got two viable candidates worth thinking about. And I agree with Supervisor, we just need to make a decision and move forward, and if we, if we end up that we don't want any of these candidates, then we're going to start the whole process over again. And I just, to make that decision, I'm not sure how we come to that decision when you look at the qualifications.
Is it going to hurt to make that phone call and ask them, and then go from there?
Would you do that with anybody else? If Jennifer James Meslow didn't show up for her interview or called and canceled, would you make a phone call?
I think the circumstances are a little bit different than that.
I would tend to disagree with you.
And I ask the question about going out again, because it's a question that you have to ask yourself, you know?
Ernie? Is that the number one?
No, forget it.
You ready to vote? Okay, roll call vote.
Hey, trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue? Trustee Iverson?
No.
Trustee Marx? Clerk Gertari is no, and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion fails, four to three.
Okay. Ernie?
Okay, where do we go now, people? May I be very honest, where do we go now?
All right, we have another candidate. Wait a minute, we have another candidate. Can't push that one under the steps either. Go ahead, John.
You can revert to now asking about the other two candidates that we've heard, whether the board is desirous of giving them further consideration. You can do that without the vote.
We can also have a second interview.
With whom?
It's up to us, we can do what we want.
How about if, if you want a motion that bad, then how about if we make, if you want a motion rather than just making that decision? Why don't we ask about the other two, whether there's further consideration desire? That's a polite, courteous way to illuminate them.
I think I know what you're saying. Okay. So you want to narrow it down?
Just narrow the field.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
No, I think, I, I know where I am going from. I'm not sure about the rest of the board, whether, but we have two other candidates we could make that...
You just want a consensus, or do you want to vote? Just a consensus from all of us, or...
We, no, I, now, now, the chair has asked for a vote.
No, I didn't. I'm trying to figure out what you want to do next.
I think that we should make a motion that the other two candidates, we can refer to them by letter, if we want, they not be given any further consideration. Do it individually, one at a time.
Are you talking about candidate two and three?
The names are already out there.
Yeah, the names are out there, we can say names.
Yeah, we don't have to do letters.
I'll just think of who we interviewed, I guess, John.
Ron Esney. We interviewed him.
I'm sorry?
Ron Esney?
Yes.
We interviewed him, had a detailed, long interview. I move that he not be given any further consideration.
Any support?
Just for the record, was that Candidate Three?
Yes.
I'll support.
Any comment?
So that's, so who was that? Ron Esney?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
I guess the question is, where do we go from here? I would like to see if the Supervisor could contact Candidate Number Four, ask him if this were pushed back a month, whether he would be in the position at that time to come up for an interview, if he is still interested.
To you.
I'm going to have to call a doctor first.
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
I can't hear you, Pete.
No, I just...
Talking under, under the table.
Thinking out loud.
Okay.
It's you guys. I'll call them right now. We'll recess the meeting.
I'm opposed to this track we're going down.
Okay. Pete?
I would, if you want to, get it off this table, or another.
Then we'll know.
Randy? Ernie?
I'm like Dave. I'm not, I'm opposed to this. I don't think we need to make special arrangements for anybody, and that, for any reason, and that. Maybe I've been in the business too long. I've interviewed too many people, seen too many things come across there. I can't see it. We've got good candidates. We address what we have, and you go forward, and that. I just can't see putting things off when we don't have to, and that. Just because someone wants someone to come out here and do it, and that's what it amounts to. And I don't agree with that. You go with what you got, you move forward. We're talking about the township now into the next 10, 15 years, we hope, and that. That's what we're looking at. And I can't see us putting it forward at all, and that. We've got something, let's go with it. Because we don't know if we're going to have anybody in another month, and that. They may just get disgusted and say, we're not doing it. Now we're really back to square one, and that.
Well, if Lynn can make the phone call right now, we will know right now.
I can't even see calling that either. I don't think, we do not owe that individual anything.
I disagree.
Well...
It's okay.
That's why we have a seventh-person Board.
That's right.
It's fine, but I don't, I don't agree with making special arrangements for one person, and that. True, it's very bad that something did happen. I've been through that. Three years ago, I had the heart attack, I had bypasses and everything else, and that. I know what that's all about, and that, so...
And did everybody just throw you out in the trash? Or did everybody support you?
They supported me, but there's only one difference. I was elected official.
But they still supported you, Ernie?
Yes.
And that's all I'm saying.
There's no way they can get rid of me unless they follow the procedure set up by the state. The Board can't get rid of me. The Board can't do anything to that. It has to go through the state, and ends up in the Governor's office to do that, so... The only other way is if I become to the point I can't do anything, and I would resign. Or my wife says, you're not going back at all.
Yeah, that's different. You're an employee, and you are an elected official.
What?
Circumstances are different. Ready?
No.
Well, I'll move off a center. I'll make a motion to offer, conditional offer, to John Kengis.
Any support?
What was it?
To offer John Kengis.
Offer the...
Offer the position to him.
Okay.
Any support?
I'll support it for discussion.
Okay. Randy, what do you want to add?
Again, we, you know, he didn't meet some of the qualifications, but I think he's just been recently a manager of Chocley Township. He's in the area, and he's going to plan to stay here for many years, so I wouldn't have a problem with him as manager. And he's going to learn and grow as he moves on, and I think we can work with that. He's a pretty fair person, and move on from there.
John, comments?
No.
Anybody else comment? Go ahead, Dave.
I just, I like John. He's got a lot of qualifications. I don't think he has sufficient qualifications for this job. I think in one or two years, he may be a good candidate for that. But I don't think he's a candidate right now.
I agree.
I don't know if he's ready yet. Don't know if it's ready, he's ready yet.
But even then, he, he seems to already be doing an outstanding job where he is. And he's okay with that. He told me that. But we need somebody like him right now with Public Works to get it reorganized, in my mind.
I think he's got his hands full right there. I think working with the proper manager, it would be an outstanding team. I really do.
Any other comments? All in favor of offering the job to John Kengis?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion fails. It's also possible that, you know, something happens to the candidate that we do offer it to, if it is Jennifer, and, you know, she declines. She gets sick. The background check doesn't work. We change our minds in 90 days, and we have to start over anyway.
I don't say 90 days.
I'd like to make a motion...
Whatever, yeah, whatever.
Check, let's check out there.
I'd like to make a motion that the Supervisor make a phone call to Candidate Number Four at this time.
Any support?
Yeah, I was willing to call him.
Is that support?
Right now, we don't have it. Yes, sorry.
Okay. Discussion?
That way, we're going to know. It's going to take 10 minutes.
Dave?
We haven't even interviewed this candidate. It seems that we had our hearts set on this guy right from the start, and he didn't show up.
Not necessarily all of us. We don't know that.
No, I think it just, we've just, if we do that, and we're going to wait for things to work out on his schedule, we're extending this out two or three months before we get a chance to decide what we want to do. And we don't even know at that time if we're going to move forward.
Any comments? The motion is to call Candidate Four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to three, but if you want a roll call?
Roll call. Trustee Everson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
No.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
Clerk Retire is yes, and Supervisor Durant?
No.
All right, I'll make the phone call.
That motion carries.
6:42, we're in recess. 6:11 PM, we are back in session. I was able to finally talk to, and so did Clerk Retire, talk to Candidate Number Four, who is still anonymous until we see the whites of their eyes. According to Legal, okay? He is willing and very able to come up, maybe in a month, and do an interview. He will let us know. And maybe that's all I can say right now. So...
Now, can I make that motion?
Whatever the pleasure of the Board is.
Let's discuss it first.
Yeah, let's... Give me a quick rundown of what motions we've had, if you can decipher your...
Yeah, the first motion was to approve the agenda as amended. The second motion was offer, conditional offer of employment to Jennifer James Maslow, and that motion failed four to three. The third motion was not to consider Ron Esney any longer, and that motion carried six to one. The fourth motion was to conditional offer employment to John Kengis. That failed one to six. And the fifth motion was to place a phone call to Candidate Number Four to review if he was still interested in the position, and that motion carried four to three.
Okay, thanks for that, Randy.
If I'm wrong, correct me, but I think that's what happened.
Yeah, that's what I remembered, but I was, I just wanted to make sure and have everybody hear it, too. All right.
Lynn?
So, yes. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just wondering if the Board is aware of Jennifer's past experience with Newberry and her malfeasance in office, and quit before she was about to be fired.
What? I am.
I think the Board should know that. I don't think that should be something that you should, or I think it is something you should have shared.
I have talked to Legal, and I just found most of this out today. You know, I've been keeping you up on everything ahead of time. And it was recommended that I let the Board decide what they wanted to do first.
I think that's important information that the Board should know.
You did. I don't know all of the details.
Okay, well, we have eliminated her at this point.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, once it went that way, that's pretty much what Roger figured. Not that he would figure this, but that the Board would decide what would happen, and then...
That's just a pretty important piece of information in making our decision.
How was that information came to you?
I just got online and started looking. Like any of us, any of you could have. And sometimes, the process eliminates candidates, too.
It just, I think it just did.
I don't know all the circumstances. Boards aren't perfect either.
Well, I'm not saying that. I just, that's just a bit of information that I think is important for every, for this Board to know before discussing, you know, possibly a second interview with her, or whatever, so...
What I, well, all I have firsthand is that she resigned. That's what she told me. That's all I know firsthand.
From Newberry?
Anything else, yes. Anything else? I don't know the status of, if there's litigation. I don't know anything else beyond that. And if you can believe Facebook and what's on the Internet, you know, it's all...
Well, if it's on Facebook, it's got to be true.
But if you...
I did not get it off the Internet or Facebook.
So you got it secondhand?
I did get it secondhand.
Or thirdhand?
No, secondhand.
Um, I, what was I going to say?
Could I ask Clerk a question?
Yeah.
Yes, Pete. How do you, example now. When we vote someone down, how do we bring it up again? Do we...
Don't go there, Pete.
No, no, no. You know, these questions you have to ask yourself. And the same thing while going, researching further. You have to ask yourself. If you don't, you shortcut the system.
The attorney brought this up, I believe, a meeting ago. Someone on the losing side, or the, someone on the prevailing side has to bring the motion to reconsider up, and it has to be 75 percent. So it has to be five out of seven that would say yes to that. Two-thirds, two-thirds.
Can we get more information on the new information that we received before we do go any farther?
I asked Legal if I should or could make a phone call today, and he was more interested in what the Board direction was going to be. That's why I did what I did.
That's fine.
I have to follow Legal. That's what we're supposed to do.
But if the Board made a motion to do so, then it was okay to do so? In Legal's opinion? To make the phone call?
To Jennifer.
Oh.
To find out the whole story.
Okay.
Firsthand.
You did that?
No.
Okay.
No, I was told not, it was recommended I did not.
I see, okay.
Because I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place, and on how to inform you guys.
When did this happen?
Today. I spent most of...
No, I mean, the incident with...
I believe she resigned in October.
Yes, oh, last year?
No, this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay. And my question would be, why wasn't it in?
If you, it's very telling if you go back and read their minutes. I'm not going to besmirch another municipality, but you, if you want details, look at their minutes. They're very telling. I don't know.
Again, but sometimes you have personality clashes, you know, and it's...
But not every municipality runs as smoothly as Marquette Township. How many times have we heard?
We do, I agree.
Some of the crazy happenstance at MTA meetings with other municipalities. They are in, they were this far away from bankruptcy. So what does that tell you about how the operation is run?
I just made a comment to Treasurer Johnson at recess that this is the first time in my three years that we've been together that we have had a disagreement.
A serious one, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's...
This is important.
Absolutely.
My mother-in-law called me, and she said, I'm so nervous for you for tonight. And I said, yes, so am I. This is a big deal.
Absolutely.
It is. But that's one of the things I said. If something's going to happen, the, all the research that has to happen first, all the testing and all the backgrounds and all the everything that happens first, sometimes that weeds things out. Boards make mistakes. People do, obviously. So unless you're one or the other, you don't know the whole story, because I sure don't. I'm not defending anybody. I'm just saying, yeah, I know, he's had his...
We want to talk about that.
He's had his hand up, I know. Go ahead, John.
I guess I'm a little concerned about the comments. And I would remind all Ward that all of the candidates deserve to be treated respectfully. And I try very hard, by my motions, to try to keep hearsay, or what else, out of the reasons for people should vote one way or the other. We need to keep in mind that we are an elected body who have some obligations to communicate, that we will act with responsibility. And to me, that means we need to avoid any speculation that we don't have facts on, and anything that we might find that on the computer, or network, or whatever. Unless we know the facts and have all the details and can point to the facts, we need to continue to treat every candidate and their status with the most respect that we can. with the most respect that we can muster.
Thank you. Randy? Yeah, you did have your...
I'm calling up on John. Making a statement that something has happened to a candidate, I don't care what it is, without anything documentation in front of us or someplace where we can actually go see it. And if you remember, whatever candidate we select is not completely selected until they go through all the background checks, both criminal and everything and that, so... And to say that something's on Facebook, on a network, anything, I, to me, they have, their worth is almost next to nothing, as far as I'm concerned. Because you don't know where it's coming from. You have no idea who's, who's for him or who's against him or anything else in that. You have to have some good documentation, one way or another, to come up with any type of decision that you're gonna make. And to me, whatever we talk about here, until I see something in writing from some area, somebody, or legal, or somewhere else, it's there, but I can't use that as a yardstick to make a decision in that, because it's not in front of me. I don't have anything in front of me. Just because someone says something, I still have to move forward, knowing that's there, we'll have to check it all out. But we have to make a statement that this is what we've got, we've gotta move forward.
Pete?
In this day and age, is when you got highly qualified people coming in and applying for jobs and going into, not to say that boards are laid back a little bit, but any U.P. and somewhat very, there's quite a few downstate are very laid back. If you get someone who's very qualified and a go-getter, they will have problems with boards. If you get somebody a little bit stricter here, you will have trouble with the board, you know? But you can't take anything away from the person because they are highly educated and in a lot of different areas have been educated in. Don't hold it against their, the person, I should say, so...
I know...
If there's something there, you have to research and do it, but don't hold it against the person.
I know, two people personally...
There are lots of changes we can make in this township. You know, as far as, you know, reporting and stuff like that, how it's being run and stuff like that. You know, maybe they got different ideas. That's why I always said that I like to see someone who comes from a larger township or city or something to come in, to bring their ideas of what they've seen and incorporate it to what we have, because I think we do a very good job. I mean, our infrastructure is good, and a lot of other things are, are good. And I think roads are better than most people. And Nagani, after we did that road project for Marquette Township, they copied ours. Chalkley's doing the same thing. So we're doing a lot of things right, but, you know, you have to be careful of not to criticize a person who's gung-ho and wants to get done and is educated.
I know of two people personally...
I might not be saying that right, but I...
Oh, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Who had trouble with boards and not municipal boards.
Ishmin had a problem with board, Chalkley had a, Nagani had a problem, you know what I mean?
Went somewhere else and they did fine.
Yeah.
Not everybody gets along.
Right.
My way of right is maybe not yours or the next person's. But, you know, with a split vote anyway, I don't know that that tells an incoming candidate a lot of positive, warm and fuzzy feelings. You know, if it were four to three or three to four.
A no isn't always a no. A no is sometime an opportunity to ask for more information. You know, it's, seems funny to say that, but it's true. You know, no is not always, don't always mean no, so...
Dave?
Yeah, back to what we're doing here, where we at today?
Yeah.
We've eliminated all candidates that we have interviewed.
Yep.
Down to one candidate we haven't interviewed. So where are we at?
He's gotta make a motion.
Motion to what?
I'll make a motion that we coordinate a time up to six weeks to interview candidate number four, have him come up and do an interview in front of the full board. That was about the timeframe that he said?
Maybe a month.
Okay, I'll say four to six weeks.
Say six weeks, just to...
Okay.
I'll support that.
Okay, discussion?
Roll call vote.
Any thoughts? Dave, I thought I shut you off.
Yeah, if I understand your conversation in return is that he may be available for us.
He said it could be a month, maybe two.
But there's no guarantees, so...
We have to cut it off somewhere.
Well, what we're gonna do here is, we're considering putting the whole process on hold until we actually get to interview candidate number four.
I guess that's the understanding?
If candidate number four actually makes himself available for six weeks, what happens if in four to six weeks, he says he's not ready yet?
Then we're gonna have to go out and do some more research.
No.
That's why there's a four to six week timeframe.
You're saying if we don't hear from the candidate up to six weeks, then we start over?
At that point in time, then I think we decide what we wanna do from there.
The worst-case scenario is we have the manager, current manager, until June 1.
He's here until June.
The only option of what to do from there is to start the process over.
Correct.
Correct. If need be.
And you're okay with that total explanation, Randy? Did you second it?
I am. I'm putting six weeks down, maximum of six weeks.
That's okay, yes.
Yeah, do you wanna, go ahead.
What do we do with the existing candidates?
They've been outvoted.
We turn them all down?
Turn them all down? Do we let them know what's going on there?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I agree, I think that's your obligation.
I wrote them letters and thanked them for coming and told them about tonight. Keep them up, up to date.
Absolutely.
So we maybe end up with just one candidate sitting here that we're gonna vote on?
If we don't like that one candidate, then we have the option to look for more. We have time.
Then we're talking six to eight weeks to go through the whole process again.
How did it get to eight weeks?
By the time you put it in the paper and get everything that? When did we start this? We started this in September. And now where are we now?
Let's not dwell on what-ifs. We have, we have...
We're calling on what-ifs right now.
We have till, we have until June, Randy. And if it means picking the right candidate, then so be it.
We may not have the right candidate in June.
There's nothing to say that we have to have a candidate by the time the manager leaves. Many jobs, you don't have that advantage. Maybe he'll stay another month or two. We don't know what's gonna happen yet. We have a motion asking for the last candidate to be interviewed within the next six weeks. Go ahead, John.
Or, we might consider an acting manager. I hate to throw the mud in the street, but you could, if you had to, have an acting manager.
Those are all bridges we will cross?
Those are all, at the end, when we don't have anywhere else to go...
We've got six weeks to think about what we can do.
That's right. And I'll think of a few more between now and...
Well, at six-thirty, I'm gonna call a question.
Okay, and you want a roll call?
Trustee Everson?
Yes.
Clerk Retire is yes. Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
No.
Uh, trustee Marks?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
And trustee, or Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Go ahead, Randy.
Push the button.
That's all right.
Push your button.
Do we really need any to move forward on the actual manager's contract at this late date? Timeframe, or we can just... It's gotta be, we have, we have no reason to have one right now.
We have six weeks to look at it. We need to have something in place before the end. That's why I gave it to you early, so we, this is, if you wanna leave what we got, fine. I mean, it's all seven of us have to decide, but I'm not saying it has to be tonight. It doesn't have to be tonight. We can discuss it at a regular meeting. I put them together because I thought they would, they would work together. And sometimes the candidate depends on the person, too. You have to, have to think about who you're working with. Okay?
Absolutely.
So you wanna move the discussion on the contract to just totally tabling it is not the correct terminology?
No, I would like to move it to the next board meeting.
Regular agenda?
Either that, or I would, I don't know if we should spend our business time on that. Maybe a work session would be better.
Oh, that's fine, yeah. Just don't, I don't wanna postpone it for six weeks.
Right, yeah, I don't either. So we'll put it on the next agenda to...
Pick a date.
Do a special meeting, maybe... What's our timeframe? We're gonna do six weeks, let's put six weeks from today.
Yeah, that puts us into January, early January. So let me look at the calendar here.
Six weeks just is too vague.
It's in January.
January seventh, eighth.
So we're the twenty-fifth today.
January sixth.
So one, two, three, four, five, six. So, yeah, January sixth would be the...
We have to hear from him by January sixth. All right, so I added to the next agenda to move the manager's contract to that agenda to set up a special meeting.
Schedule a special meeting or a work session.
Yeah.
The advantage of the work session is, is you can have a more frank discussion on it and there's no motions made and...
And a special meeting, we probably don't need a special meeting because we're just gonna come up with some kind of a...
And ultimately, the candidate that we do end up with is gonna wanna look at that anyway and negotiate it back and forth. So I think a work session, we can kinda get consensus which, what we want or what we don't want. And then, when you finally have a candidate, I guess you present it to them then.
Do you have a time?
Well, it'll be January sixth by the end of, by five o'clock, by the end of closing.
Do you have board comment?
So do we just have to hear from them by then, or do we actually have to have the interview by then?
I think it was interview, right? Isn't that what the motion was?
Interview.
Have the interview within, what did you say?
Six weeks.
Up to six weeks.
Up to.
I mean, we can set it up at, when, the earliest that he can make it.
He said he will be here in person.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll put that, we don't need a motion to put that. We'll just put it on the agenda for December 3rd.
Okay.
And you will notify them that this is our wishes?
As soon as we break.
I would, I would assume that, yeah, thank you.
All about notifying. Are we good? Public comment? Anybody wanna share any thoughts? Board member comment? John?
If anyone ever wondered where the description of activity that was labeled as osmosis, now you know where it came from.
Anybody else?
Can you elaborate on that just a little bit, John?
Very slow, very awkward, and time-consuming.
Okay.
Okay. Wanna go through the motions once more?
Yes, I will. So we all know what we're, what we voted on and what we've decided. So the first motion was to approve the agenda as amended, which we flipped the two subjects around. Second motion was a conditional offer to Jennifer James Maslow, and that failed four to three. Second, or the third motion was to not consider Ron Yezny, and that, that carried six to one. Fourth motion was to off, conditional offer to John Kangas for employment, and that failed one, one to six. Fifth motion was to make a phone call to candidate four to see if there was any further interest in the position, and that carried four to three. The sixth motion was to give candidate number four up to six weeks for an in-person interview, and that carried five to two.
Thank you. I need one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Six thirty-four. Thank you, folks.